Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 11, 2020. And I have a motion moved by Council Rowley, seconded by Council LeBlanc, that the committee amend the agenda of February 11, 2020, Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting by withdrawing delegation from the Brighton Crammy Chamber of Commerce as requested. All those in favor? And then I have a motion moved by Council Rowley and seconded by Council LeBlanc that the committee approved the February 11, 2020 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting Agenda as amended. All those in favor? And do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If any discussion comes up with regard to the cemeteries, I am a member of the Board of Directors of Trinity St. Andrews United Church, the owner and operator of Hilton Cemetery.
Thank you. Anyone else? None. And we don't have delegations. And so next we have citizens' comment. Do we have any citizens' comments? So, next we move into our second draft review. We all received that in our mailboxes. If we wanted to start off, Lynda, did you want to start off with giving us a little bit of a brief overview? And then we can just see, decide what we're all going to talk about tonight.
Okay, thank you. So, when we finished the meetings on February 5th, we were at a 6.13% tax increase, which is at the bottom of that first box on page 3. Following that, staff added a few more things to the budget or took away. So there's reports on a rubber tire excavator. There's also reducing the health services per the contract that was negotiated between council and the physician. Increasing the computer program cost for Mount Hope because the invoice came in and we realized that we didn't have enough money in the budget. Brighton Digital Archives had their first meeting. They have asked for an increase in their budget of $500. And changes to the bylaw department budget per a conversation I had with the CAO of $2,500. So at this point, we're at 5.46% tax increase.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we should just take a moment to go over all those items that you just listed. And we can start with the rubber tire excavator. I don't know why an excavator has to be named by the type of tires it has, but anyway, maybe you can explain that to us and let us know a little bit more about it. We've read the report, but just give us some highlights on that.
Okay, so the rubber tire excavator, I call it rubber tire because it literally has rubber tires and not tracks, so it can traverse down the roads and it's a little more maneuverable. Yeah, so this report takes operating budget that we used to hire contracted services to do brushing work, takes a lot of that money, allocates it towards the purchase of the vehicle, paying back the loan, and then, you know, increase fuel budget and increase maintenance budget, which gives us an overall operational savings of $55,000.
Okay. Any questions from council? Start with mayor and then to Council Rowley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And with the budget you've provided here, that will give us the same number of kilometers of brushing and ditching or ditching that we get with the $110,000 contract services?
Yes, it'll give us equal brushing and hopefully some ditching, which we haven't accounted for just yet.
Thank you.
Now, just to make sure all council knows, this is a transfer of funds that eliminates the ability to hire a contractor and we'll be doing the work in-house with our own staff. And I guess if this is approved, I would be asking for, I guess, special approval to start the purchasing process tomorrow on this, just to make sure we get it delivered in time so that we can start our spring work with it. Because it will take a few months, if not four months, to get it delivered with the brusher head on it. So it's a tender process that I'd like to start tomorrow. And we're prepared to release the tender tomorrow as well.
And I think there are a few other items that we may need to make a motion on to start the RFP process before the end of the evening. So I don't know who's keeping a list of those, but either that or we'll make a list. But anyway, just so we're all aware of any things that we need to make a motion on tonight. Council Rowley?
Thank you. Laura, Preston already answered my question, based on it being done by your own staff now. This will be also an annual budget reduction of $55,000 until, or does that change from year to year?
No, that'll be an annual reduction because we've eliminated that contracted service and moved it in-house.
Moved it in. Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion then to move that? Or are we going to just do them all at one time at the end?
Well, we've been generally doing consensus all the way through, so we'll just continue with that.
I mean for the, I mean for the, for the tender process.
Yeah, we'll make a motion for all the items that need to be taken care of. Council LeBlanc, this was your idea, right? So I don't know if you wanted to add anything or say anything?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. What it is, is last year you used a contractor. You did some brushing, some ditching, and quite a bit of brushing. Got a little bit of thing, but it was good. I support the rubber tire at High Hole, but after having very little brushing and ditching done for years in rural community, I still like the idea of having the contractor do it. Because if we're going to use our new equipment and our head to start cutting five-inch and six-inch trees and stumps, I think it would be better off to let the contractor break his equipment and use ours that would stay new and do all the trimming and stuff and keep up with everything, the standard operating procedures and the preventive maintenance plan that you would come with ditching and brushing, which we haven't had for a long time. So I'm in favor, but I'm also in favor of keeping the contractor.
So what you're saying, you're in favor of the purchase, but you want to keep that $55,000 in the budget to cover, well...
It's $120,000.
Yes, this $55,000 is just the savings part. So you want to put the $120,000 back in the budget as well? That's your desire, right?
Yes, because I'd like to see it done. It hasn't been done a long time. And if we're going to buy a new piece of equipment with a new head, and the first thing we're going to do, we're going to go cut in five-inch and six-inch trees and branches hooking up, you know, we're going to wreck that piece of equipment. And then we're going to have, all of a sudden, after two, three years of doing it and trying to catch up, it's going to problem. I agree with the storm sewer, water, ditching, you know, the dredging, the ditching, everything you can do with the flexibility of the equipment. I like it. But I also want to see the brushing and the citizens and the rural community also want to see the brushing keep on going at the pace it was. So like, that's just my opinion. And I'll go with the will of council.
So in that budget, is there anything there for maintenance? Like obviously to replace heads or that sort of thing? Are we taking that into consideration?
Yes, we put $5,000 in there just for the equipment, basically of the brusher head to replace the hammers and the cutters. And just to clarify with Council LeBlanc, this machine is made to cut four- and five-inch trees and brush the stumps down. It's not made to chew down, you know, two-foot stumps. It's made to brush. So anything larger, like six inches and larger, would be hand-cut regardless if we use a contracted service or our own staff. So I guess this business plan was built around eliminating that contracted service to fund this purchase and the program to bring internally. So if the wish is to keep it contracted, then I would retract this purchase of the rubber tire at this time because it was kind of built around the plan of bringing it in-house and doing the work ourselves to increase our flexibility and hopefully be more independent. So I guess it's at the will of council, but you know, this is done based on that plan.
Council Tadman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. But you would have a priority list of the most risky areas where it needs to be done, then?
Yes, we have all the work listed. Last year got the most dangerous spots that were left the longest. And we're hoping to move to just a four-year rotational program where we do, you know, 30 to 40 kilometers a ditch a year to maintain it and brush it once every four years.
Just to follow. And you have staff that would be trained to use that?
Yes, we already have existing staff trained to use that equipment. Now, the purchase of the piece of equipment with the brusher head would involve the equipment supplier to come down and train our guys physically on that brusher head and the use of that brusher unit.
I guess my final statement in that room wasn't built in a day and ditches aren't all going to be done in one or two years, so I would stick with the plan.
The new plan?
Yeah.
Council Anderson?
I like the new plan, but I'm not in favor of cutting 12-inch trees with it. It looks ugly. I don't think, I know the residents don't like it, anything large. And I know it's an appearance that looks bad for a while, but it does grow back in. But I think we should be sympathetic to the trees and the environment and how we go about it. And I think you have a great plan there, Councilor, to have that machine. And I think we should go with the plan that Public Works has, based on what it's capable of doing.
Okay, any other comments or go ahead?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Council Anderson, I know what the equipment can do and that's why I've asked for it. And the thing is, is that also, I will go with the new plan if you come up with a plan like you did for the resurfacing of roads. And you would have this many roads that are going to be done every year with this piece of equipment. Can you do that?
Yes, we can come up with a plan. And again, it would be just like the service treating plan where it has to be a little bit fluid. Because obviously it depends on moisture and growth and time of year and all that jazz. But yeah, we can come up with kind of a target area of the rural roads, for sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. And just to be clear, you'll provide that information to members of council once you have that plan? Doesn't have to be in a council meeting. It shouldn't be debated. It's operational. I think it would just be good for us to know so that when we get the phone call, we can say, nope, that road's not there until 2027 or whatever. I know it's a four-year, but...
Absolutely. It would take five or six weeks for us to get put together, but yeah, we can circulate it once it's complete.
Okay. I mean, I like the idea of bringing it in-house and being able to control these things ourselves. Do we have a general consensus from council as far as how we want to go, that we approve it as it is, as it's been presented? Yeah? Okay. So, go ahead.
Is this, because in August, we voted in $120,000 for brushing for three years and $60,000 for ditching. Is this one year or all three years?
The operational budget is done per year. So we base that initial $120 on taking three, four years to really catch up on the brushing. So this is a permanent reduction of the $55,000 just for this item.
For one year?
For one year. And it comes strictly at a brushing only. We still have $60,000 in the ditching budget for hiring of equipment and potential operator and equipment, that sort of thing.
So if we find next year that not enough is done, we can address it next year, right? So that makes sense? Everyone's good? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Preston just gives too much information, so we're just going to chew it apart. You said the ditching is not included in this, that we're still going to contract ditching? Or are we still going to do some of our ditching in-house as well?
We will try to do some ditching ourselves, but typically with ditching, especially in the fall when we get to it, we can't necessarily haul ditching material with our trucks, especially when you get into rocks or stumps, because you can tear the chains out of the bottom. So we typically have to hire a lot of trucks. And sometimes we might have to hire a piece of equipment with an operator in order to keep up with production, depending how our service treating program goes.
Okay, so we're good with that. The reduction, we don't need to discuss that, right? Health services. Computer program for Mount Hope, it's $800. We're all kind of good with that, yeah? Digital Archives budget revision of $500. Does everyone kind of read that? Makes sense with that? We have a couple of advisory committees that we're going to look at that we didn't really discuss, a couple of the newer ones yet. But we'll just finish with this list first. Yeah, go ahead.
So we're accepting the extra $500?
Well, do we want to discuss it when we look at all of the, we have a few other advisories, so we'll look at it then?
We will discuss it.
Yep, sure. And then the bylaw department, there's a change of $2,500. It is a reduction. Is anyone able to speak to that a little bit? Staff member or give us a little bit? I know we have it, but give us the lowdown.
Sure. So through you. Lynda and I have been chatting back and forth, and it was a reduction of some administrative items that were closer to year-to-date versus not. We had planned to do it before the first draft got out and simply missed it. So all we're trying to do is catch up on an adjustment that was supposed to be made in the first place.
Okay. So that makes sense? Everyone's good with that? So we did receive the details of all the different advisory committees. If you're able to pull that out, I think it's just the three that we should just go over and make sure we're okay with. That's the Brighton Digital Archives. Is it three or is it two that I've got here? And the rural advisory, I think the rest are all pretty much what they were before. So just the two, actually. Right? No? Sure, we can go through it all. Lynda, did you have something to?
I just wanted to remind the committee that you did talk about adding $2,000 to the community events budget. And we sort of talked about taking it from the reserve, but I don't think there was consensus on that.
Is that included in here already? This committee, this...
The $2,000 is not.
Okay. All right, so let's just go, does everyone have these sheets? I think Lynda emailed it to us. Or you printed them? Oh, they were on our desk the one time. Yeah. Do enough of us have it? We can share or... Do we want copies in order to look at it? Does everyone get a couple of copies done? Sure, we might as well. Doug's got it? No, Emily, do you have it? So it's just these two that don't have it? Yeah, it's just two. No, I don't have mine, so I can't even start. You can ask whatever you like. Well, we're looking at all of them, aren't we? We'll just go through the list quickly. Okay. We'll do it. Before we start, you can ask and then we can move on to these. You can ask that now, which be like. Yeah, go ahead. Put your microphone on, though. Council Anderson has a question about the Police Services Board and why it went down in budget.
It was, last year was, last year was $3,000. I haven't got it in front of me. I did cheers somewhere. It was $3,000 and something last year, and this year it's $300 in 2020.
The Police Services Board did decrease a bit, but that is because we used to have a staff member on the Police Services Board, and now it's being, the Clerks Department is actually doing all of the recording for that board. So there's no wages that are attributed to that board now.
Okay, so that's what it is.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so let's just quickly go through each of them. First, we have Heritage Advisory Committee. It did go down a little bit because we separated out the Digital Archives Committee. So it went from 14 to 11. Unless someone puts up their hand because they want to talk about it, I'm just going to keep going. So the Digital Archives, we have here at $11,505, but it's $11,505 now.
Okay, I'll put on my app. Let the mayor go first.
Go ahead. I know, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So that means with the split in the committees, it's up $8,000 year-over-year or, yeah, $8,000 year-over-year.
Yeah. So part of that is because you have a whole separate full committee, right, who have the honorariums to be paid? And I think there were a few changes as well. So I'm on the Heritage Advisory Committee, and the Digital Archives used to be part of it. So I can talk a little bit about it, maybe Council Tadman can talk about it. But I think there were just a few new initiatives that were happening and taking over some things. And so I think that's where a lot of it comes from. But Council Anderson, you can ask your question, and Council Tadman can talk about it as well.
A few items on that list that, $5,100 for promotions, that's sort of open-ended. I presume that, and I'm not going to presume anything, but that could be maps and calendars and things like that. I don't know if they need a promotion budget. That maybe should be sustained some other way, but that's my opinion.
Not a promotion budget? Maybe Council Tadman, are you able to?
Okay, just, I'll ask that question. Promotions, do we know what that is?
It's a bit of everything.
Microphone.
So they can get more people to bring their artifacts in, and they do a lot of work with interviewing people that have the history of the area, that kind of thing. So it's not, when it says promotions, I guess that was the best word they could come, but it's, it's all that they're trying to do to make this a really good committee. They were functioning on their own, and our clerk felt that it should be a committee of council, which, you know, they knew nothing about, so they were quite willing. But as Lynda Whittifield was very good and came at the time when we first had our meeting, like there's things that, on this, that the honorariums that were never, you know, on before. You know, of course, the health tax and WCB and all that kind of stuff. I think it's a reasonable budget considering what they do. But if that happens to be a problem for you, maybe, can you remember anymore that, what was the other thing?
So the changes that were made to the budget, they separated out equipment. They, the promotions includes the calendar printing that they do, and it also includes the history event. So right there, that's about $4,500 of that amount for just those two things. I think it's $2,000 for the history weekend, and it's another $2,500 for the calendars. They have a, the computer program was at $2,415, but now it's $1,015. The reason for that is that's their website. That's the cost of the website. And then they moved the equipment down to its own line. And then they also budgeted to transfer their money from their reserves to cover some of that equipment. And then miscellaneous revenue, I advise them that if they're going to receive funds from citizens and from their events, that they need to budget for it. So they've budgeted that miscellaneous revenue of $1,000. So that's where they ended up with an increase of $500, even though they were increasing their expenditures by more than that.
Okay. I just want to comment too, like we have, if you look at the Heritage Advisory, they have $4,000 for miscellaneous. But because they've been operating for years, we know that's for plaques and that's for, you know, so each of these, you know, that sounds kind of, $4,000 for miscellaneous, what do you need that for? But we know that they're doing their job and that they're having to pay for those items. And I think that's similar with promotions. It's kind of, because they can't call it one thing, but it is calendars and all those other things that they're doing each year. But anyway, I think, Mayor, you had a question?
I'm curious about the transfer to reserves, the final line item in the changed budget. Why are they transferring money to reserves?
That would be the revenue that they collect. They're planning to transfer or ask council if they can transfer it back. If you approve it in the budget, though, then it will be done without a report.
Is it right to assume that regardless of how much miscellaneous revenue they bring in, the intent is to transfer it to reserve in order to balance itself out?
That is a correct assumption.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready to move on with that? Yeah? I'm not getting any nods, so, yeah. Yep, okay, good. So Apple Fest, we can just go over briefly. We still need to leave the $10,000 in there for, I think it's called Public Relations in the Budget, but we're going to have to find another way to... Oh, yes, that's right. We did change it to 11. And we want to keep that in there because either way, we need to hire out somehow how to get that street fair done. And myself and Council Rowley are going to meet with Ben next week to talk about options to make Apple Fest happen at this point. So anyway, so Apple Fest is at 17398. We're okay with that. Community Events has gone up a little bit. I think we kind of briefly discussed that. I believe that's the park, the Movies in the Park and...
The Movies in the Park belonged, was the $2,200, and it didn't belong in miscellaneous.
Okay, that's great. We're okay with that. All these miscellaneous expenses. Accessibility Advisory Committee is about the same? Oh, sure, yep.
The Community Events, we decided, I think, as a council, well, a committee, that we were going to put the extra $2,000 and take it from reserves. So maybe Lynda needs a nod on that.
Yeah. Do you need us all to agree to that? Okay.
And that's coming out of the reserve for Community Events?
That'll come out of the Community Events reserve and be added to the civic awards expenditures.
Yeah, okay. For this year? And maybe we can expect to see then, that would be $4,000 in, every year going for, or $2,000 every year going forward instead of the biannual where at least we can kind of make a little money for that committee?
Yep. And I think we already agreed to that. Yeah. Okay, accessibility, not much of a change there. We're okay with that. Any questions? Okay. Rural Advisory, now that has actually quite a bit of an increase. This is a newer committee. Who's on Rural Advisory, maybe, okay, are you able to speak to it, Doug?
Yes, some of the points that we brought out is that we wanted a little bit more participation, and they wanted to have a couple of events for the farmers and inspectors of some of the farms. I'm looking at more of the rural area in the rural.
Is that the miscellaneous expense? Is that the miscellaneous expense?
The miscellaneous expense. The other one is the $2,400 was, citizens were talking to us and they don't know when the meetings are. And I know that the town is doing the same thing, doing a notification that there's a meeting on this day, or put it in the paper. And because there was $360, they didn't have enough money to do it. We do get some attendance. The sanatorium, okay.
So do you know why the honorariums have gone up so much? More meetings?
More meetings, yeah.
What's the mandate for that committee? Do we need to, is it four meetings or is it 10? They're all 10?
But before, it would have three a year. We want to do all 10.
Is there a reason for needing all 10? I just want to know. Is it because of the job?
Yeah, we're having good discussion. We're having good citizens' comments and stuff that's coming up. that's coming up. Like, the one comment came up, came up for the Woodland Road, some of, the old Woodland Road that got put on by the committee. They're talking about different road signage, the farming, the farming vehicle where the traffic is going, talking with the bylaw officer, and with roads and ground for ditching, roading. The citizens that come there for what they need on the roads, they come there and participate in that. So, that's why we want to have it. And as I go to the breakfast meetings, or the breakfast, Tuesday breakfast, more of the citizens that live in the rural committee want to know when this committee's taking place, because it's starting to go. So, the thing is, if it's going, I'd like to keep it going with them. And it's one of the cheapest committees there.
Yeah, I mean, cheapest committee, the other committees are putting on events, right? This is, this is just to discuss, you know, right? You're not putting on events or anything like that, so, that's why, but to say it's the cheapest, all these committees have expenses in order to put on those events, right?
But it's one of the things that, if it's not used, it'll be, we don't have a place to put it in the reserve, or we do, I just thought, no, we don't. We would return it back to the town. It's a good thing that the committee...
You just want to be allowed to have ten, you don't have to have ten, though.
That's right, just to put out that.
So, we can budget for it. Go ahead, Counselor Tabman.
I certainly don't have a problem spending four thousand on the rural area, but I think much more attention gets spent to everything north of, well, the 401, let's say. But we have four rural areas, and I would like to see the Rural Advisory Committee bring in, well, let's say, Preskill, east, west, and north, because it's not just for the north of the 401.
Yeah, actually, I do agree with that. I used to, when I lived in Smithfield, and people didn't think that, we weren't, you know, you don't live in town, and you're not part of the rural community. I was told I was not part of the rural community, actually, by some members, and, you know, the thing is, I was part of the rural committee. So, I think if you're going to expand to more meetings, I think it's important to make sure that people in those rural community, communities know as well that they have a place to go to.
That's a very good point you bring up, Deputy Mayor, Counselor, Counselor Mayor Tabman. The thing is, that's one of the things that we discussed, was to get them all participating, and not just hold the meetings at the North Fire Hall. When they were announced, there's going to be in Smithfield, we're going to announce that it's, work with the Preskill Committee and bring their, so they're concerned. When they did the brushing of Preskill, everybody heard, everything that was done down there was excellent, they really liked it, because they could, they had sight of vision. So, it's tough to get out there, to get us more visible, that they know, that they can come.
That makes sense. Yep, everyone okay with that? Go ahead, Counselor Tabman.
So, there's nothing in your budget that shows that you'll be advertising that rural is the former township?
Yeah, we're trying to focus on the first part.
Okay. So, you'll just remind the committee to do that, then? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, so, we're okay?
Who's the staff rep on that? Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, it's myself, and I believe the bylaw officer's also on that committee. Oh, he attends every meeting anyways, but, yeah.
Clerk, she, Candace, want to answer that?
Yeah. Um, you know, Alan's been directed that he's not, not to be going to that meeting unless it's a bylaw questions, or anything that comes up, then he can go to those meetings. Patrick, Celestro is just there, like every other committee, as the clerk, to take the minutes and do agendas. I think Preston is the liaison that we have on that committee, yeah.
Okay. Is that it's your question?
Yes, thank you.
And the thing is, by having a staff at these committee meetings, I understand your point that you made once meeting before, how important it is.
It is. Okay, emergency planning, not much of a change there, actually, a few dollars. So, are we okay with all of those? Okay. Okay, so, I think we've talked about everything that we need to talk about. Is there anything anyone wants to rehash? Am I allowed to ask that? Should I ask that? Maybe Linda, did we make any changes? Or are we at the four point four six still?
We're at five point four six. The only change that we just made was the adding to the Civic Awards expenditure and taking from reserves.
Okay, so, we're at five point four six, which translates to a blended rate of three point four seven, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, did you have a question?
More of a statement, I suppose. We have a broadband committee that hasn't met yet, it has just been established, and it does not have a budget, because of course, they haven't been able to meet, to form a budget, and it would be appropriate, I think, of this group to come up with one for them, even if it's just honoraria and that kind of stuff. I don't think, at this stage, well, we should let them figure out what they're going to do in the future, but for now, let's, let's get them a few meetings, so that they, you know, they can gather and get paid.
So, would they, would we set them up like we did with rural, with starting with, like, maybe just four meetings a year, or something like that?
Yes, our first meeting's going to be the first Wednesday, in the, first Wednesday of the month, which is going to be Wednesday of March. This is going to be our first meeting, and then, we're going to have to come to council, because we got four members, and we got four more people that want to join, like, because we're allowed six on the committee.
They need to apply.
They need to apply, that's right, they got to apply.
No, no, did, did we, did we choose all the members for the committee already?
Coming to council.
It's coming to council on Monday, okay. So, at this point, we just want to talk budget. So, what's a reasonable budget that we could set for this committee? Linda, do you have a suggestion? It's like four hundred dollars, or five hundred dollars? I don't know what's, just to take care of honorariums for the first year, I don't know.
If they're going to meet, they're going to meet four times a year.
Yeah, I'm just doing some quick.
And we're looking at six members. Maybe twenty-five hundred dollars, and that would include payroll taxes and everything.
Take care of everything? Do we want to go with that?
Thank you for saying so.
Okay, so, if we can add that as well?
You thank the clerk.
Anything else that we need to discuss tonight, before we talk about the bottom line? Go ahead, Counselor Tabman.
Have we still got the money in for memory junking to do the study?
Yes.
And what is our final amount that we've got budgeted for sidewalks? I guess, a lot of them are new, right? But have we got, how much in the operating floor repairs?
So, as council will recall, Preston brought forward a project in August of last year, so we're actually going to fund some of the sidewalks, repairs, maintenance, by gas tax, federal gas tax. Some of it was transferred from reserves at the end of the year. So, Preston has budgeted two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for maintenance on sidewalks, and then, there's also a new sidewalk going in on the urban road Sanford.
Okay, thanks. I just couldn't remember.
Counselor Rowley? Thank you, just clarification on that, so the two hundred plus is for repairs for existing sidewalk. Specifically, I'm thinking of Main Street, but that's not to add new sidewalk, those are added in with the urbanization projects, is my guess?
That's correct.
Counselor LeBlanc?
One thing I haven't seen in the budget is, is something for the strategic plan, something that we should be pre-designing, to have something shovel-ready, to pick a project, and we could put the money here to have it designed and ready, in case there's federal provincial funds that come available. And I didn't see this in its budget, because we did it, we worked last year very hard on a strategic plan. I think we should pick one thing and do a pre-design for it. I don't know who I would put that question to, the CAO, is it?
So, just to have some comments here. I bring to you, once a quarter, an update with respect to where are we on the strat plan. So, the next report is coming next Tuesday, so that'll give you an update with respect to what we accomplished in two thousand nineteen. In the midst of preparing the two thousand and twenty work plans for each one of the departmentettes, and, so, we have some specific projects that we're trying to tackle here and finance. Party number one being the MBBR project, and trying to get funding for that, it's about nine million dollar hit for the municipality. We've had some, certainly some movement from a property standpoint, you know, we all talked about that not so long ago, so we have a bit of a game plan in that regard. And we just updated council last week with respect to where are we. So, that might be the project to talk about, if we wanted to talk about projects for the future. But we're focused on MBBR, and trying to get that in the ground in two thousand and twenty. We're setting the stage for recreational lands in the future. So, that's for me, party number two. Party number three, through our director, we're tackling roads, ditches, and sidewalk shortfalls from years gone by, and trying to catch up. So, this year, we're not only tackling sidewalks, which we're going to hammer away at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or so, you have a significant chunk within your budget for next year for dealing with trees and bad trees. We've got like, plus or minus two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars where we have identified, let's say, a hundred-plus trees that are viewed by us staff as dangerous. So, we need to get at those. And then, once we've caught up a little bit, similar to sidewalks, we can go more on a maintenance program. So, we've got two or three or four different initiatives that are on the go. I would suggest MBBR is the first project. Second project is to tackle the recreational land issue, and to start thinking out loud with respect to, once we've dealt with the land, what are we building? And how big is it going to be? What's it going to cost from a capital standpoint? What's it going to cost from an operating standpoint? And decide whether we're going to have a curling club and a rink, or a double ice pad, or a combination of YMCA with a pool. We've got, we've got lots of discussion there. That's not going to happen overnight. We have that within our strategic plan, basically to tackle the land issue in the short term, but, you know, when we start dealing with the, the arena and the curling club, I think it's like two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, that we're tackling that. The pool is a little bit later on, I think it's like twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So, I think that, once we get past the MBBR project, we're going to be shortly chatting about the recreational complex, curling club arena, and getting ready, getting ready for that.
Okay.
Right, so, the other issue is, we had stepped up the plate last year with respect to pre-engineering funds, and we have a carry forward from previous years of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred of which, two hundred thousand dollars of which, I've just awarded contracts, and Preston can talk to you about the three road projects that we have in mind. So, that leaves about one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from carry forward. In addition to that, we have, in the two thousand and twenty budget for pre-engineering, two hundred thousand dollars. So, right today, we have plus or minus three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do some pre-engineering on roads, recreational projects, whatever, whatever, whatever you guys decide at the end of the day. So, we have a little bit of flexibility. My, my thought process is, is tackle MBBR first, deal with the land issues secondly, and then, thirdly, start figuring out what do we want, and, and from a recreational perspective. So, I get it, we got to get prepared. We have some flexibility, we have a bit of a game plan in that regard from a strat plan standpoint.
Okay, good. Mayor Strander?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. How much of that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars are we likely to spend in two thousand and twenty?
I, I, I think that's, I think that's an excellent question. We've, we've just awarded contracts for three major projects totaling about two hundred thousand dollars. Sorry? That was one ninety-eight. Anyway, so, about two hundred thousand dollars that we awarded three contracts for. I've got the details here. The projects are to, for the reconstruction of Loyalist Drive, Applewood Drive, and Sharp Road. The second one is with respect to Telephone Road, and the reconstruction of Telephone Road. And the third one is dealing with our major project this year, which is Sanford, and a little bit of work on that's Addison and Napoleon. So, those are the three projects that we're trying to get shovel-ready, in my view, and you can chat with Preston here. Getting those, we can't afford to do all, all three projects in one year or two years. So, I think that we're planning ahead three to five years with this work. So, you've got three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of pre-engineering funding to tackle some of the other stuff that we're chatting about, recreational game plan.
Thank you, Seth.
Well, I think I might be pointing out a soft spot in the budget if we, if we're looking to find money to reduce our overall tax rate, if we need to, without hurting anybody, is what I'm thinking.
Go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
No, what it is, I, I don't think it's a soft spot in the budget. I think we, the last year, we allotted the money for pre-designing work. One of them, we signed the contract for somebody to do the lift station, which was priority. I'm still waiting for that one, but we put through, we passed. But what I'm looking, I'm looking ahead, that we don't have an engineering firm to help us design, and I just want to make sure that we have pre-designed, that we have a vision ahead, looking so when roads are done, surfacing are done, sewers need to be done, and also for our strategic plan, we have something that is shovel-ready, because this government, in the next life, is going to be there, we have to have something ready. And the thing is, we got to be there. So, if we got to put an extra hundred thousand, or one percent of the budget for pre-engineering, I'm in favor of it.
Did you want to comment, Preston?
Yeah, three, Deputy Mayor. So, if this budget goes approved, as is, the shovel-ready projects sitting on the shelf, ready to go, will be Napoleon Street, Addison Street, Loyalist Drive, Applewood, and the short extension of Sharp right up to the front of our Sharp Road Office Building. All those will be designed, sitting, waiting to tender. It gives us a variety, because it's an upgrade on some urban streets, that'll involve some stormwater improvements, that sort of thing. So, it covers kind of the grants that would, would fall in that category. The other grants that may come open might be some economic development grants, so improving the road and access to the industrial park would be covered underneath that, because it's going to include some safety improvements, drainage improvements. There'll be a lay-by lane to provide the parking for the transports that are always on Applewood and Loyalist Drive, waiting to get into those factories, so it'll improve that entire area. So, we'll have two major areas covered, I think, by grant. And then, we also have the pumping station in Forest Main, that's being designed currently. Hopefully, by the end of the year, that's shelf-ready, too, to take advantage of any of those grant opportunities that might come up. So, we're kind of covering as much as we can for the different streams that might come out.
Follow-up, anyone? Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. Kudos to staff for looking ahead, finally, that we're going to be ready to get a few, few projects that they're there, ready to go, instead of trying to fit a project into a funding program that we're, you know, and then we, you know, we don't, we don't have all of the information that we need, or we're kind of sending things in at the last minute and maybe not complete. So, I'm pleased to hear that we're planning ahead and getting some things ready that we can move to the future.
Thank you. Councilor Tadman?
Certainly never want to add to the interest rates for the taxpayers, but I brought it up a long time ago, and I can't remember whether it was budget meeting. But we have sought for years and years and done nothing about the Couey property. And we really do need to do something. There's a whole pot of money, as Lynda can tell everyone, that's sitting at the school board, that is really our money. I know you haven't had time, CAO, to look into it, but when are we going to move forward with that? I mean, it could be a budget item for this year to begin that process.
Great question.
Great question, but given where we are, I've not turned the first page and have not spent any time with you and/or the treasurer to talk about any details associated with that file. So I would suggest that it may become a project in 2020, but I wouldn't suggest we adjust the 2020 budget to reflect.
And that's what I was saying, but it's something that I think that we should keep on the burner because that's a pile of land that we may be able to get some help with the provincial government, or the federal government, or whatever. And I know Mr. LeBlanc went in there at one time and did some testing, but it's been years since then, and that's, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore coming up Prince Edward Street.
When you're done, I was wondering, Lynda, can you just comment, explain what Councilor Tadman meant by money sitting there that we can get back, just so we all understand? Go ahead.
So there's, from my perspective, there's two issues. There's the whole issue of the back taxes and the tax sale and the vetting of a contaminated site to the municipality and the liability that goes along with that. The other issue, it's a vacant chunk of land. It's a brownfield site that is increasing year to year. The liability is increasing year to year, and we're getting nothing on the revenue side. So one of the initiatives that we have going forward with our economic development officer that's flowing out of the strategic plan is to deal with the community improvement plan from a brownfield perspective. So we're going to incentivize that. We're going to provide incentives through a community improvement plan to try and entice a developer to come and turn a brownfield into a greenfield and try and redevelop that property. We've got, as you know, we've got one, two, five different brownfields within the community. They're not doing anything, so let's get at it. So you're going to see a work plan initiative from our economic development officer this year, dealing with CIP for brownfields.
Good, good to hear. Lynda, did you want to just explain a little bit about the taxes and how that works?
Sure. So when we collect taxes, as you know, we collect for the school board, we collect for the county, and then we collect for ourselves. There's two brownfield properties in the municipality that we have been annually writing off, the municipal portion of the taxes and the interest that we're charging. So we're keeping that in an account called allowance for doubtful accounts. So when and if, but probably when, we get to the point of being able to write off a lot of those back taxes to get us down to a point where we could have a tax sale at a reasonable amount, to, you know, have that incentive for somebody to come along and turn that back into a greenfield. We won't have any impact to our tax base, but we will receive money back from both the county and the school board. So whatever taxes that we've had to pay them over the years, we'll be able to claw that back. I hope all of it, but probably most of it.
So regardless of whether or not we were paid for the taxes, we still had to pay our portion to the county and to the school board, and we can't get that back until that point, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Does everyone get that? Councilor LeBlanc?
If we're talking about the brownfield, the, our economic development man, he's got two files ready for the Couey property, and he's passed them out to potential brownfield developers that work with in Toronto, so they've come out, they've looked at it, they're looking at it very seriously on that. But I'll go back to my original question. Is the strategic plan, we worked very hard on it, before I was elected, I went and answered a whole bunch of questions. I would like to see something, pre-designed in our strategic plan. Let's pick something and get it done, so that when money comes available already, I know we're going for land and they're going stuff, if it's going to be something, let's put some money in for something to be pre-designed.
I think that, we just heard that, I mean, we already have a number of projects that are pre-designed, and this year might not be the year to start tackling some of those things that are in the future in the strategic plan. That's my understanding. We are already doing a number of projects. And we, yeah, pre-designing for a number of projects. Anyone else want to throw in on that? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Until we have the land and know the parcel that we would be building on, it's a bit premature to be designing a building. But I think we're getting there. I mean, we're doing really good work to get there, and I think maybe next year, the conversation will be very different. May I follow up with a pre-designed question?
Sure.
My question is, have we done any work pre-designing for our own municipal shoreline mitigation? Like Gosport specifically, but there are other spots along, in the municipality that have shoreline areas. And, you know, we're asking our private landowner neighbors to make sure they're mitigating against floods, and I guess I'm wondering if we're eating our own dog food here.
I've been in conversations with one of those, I'll call them the bag providers. I don't think it's going to work for our applications because we receive, especially on Bay Street, it's direct wave action, can be like three, four footers rolling in there. They're built to sustain like 22 inches of water. So I have a meeting on the 19th, they're going to give me a bit of a demonstration in the building in Belleville, so.
Thank you. As a quick follow-up, what I'm talking about is actual constructed mitigation, like piers and walls and so on. We did a lot of work on a waterfront master plan, and there's lots of things in that that the community didn't like, but certainly along the shoreline, there's things in that master plan that could have prevented the kind of flooding we saw over the course of '17 and '19 if we'd gone ahead with some of those projects. And I'm curious if we've considered any design work out of that plan for the shoreline.
I'm not aware of that plan, so no, I'm not considering any of that. The only one I've been involved is in the end of Huff Street, or Huff Road, where we're actually having failure of the road between two different, that's the only location I'm looking at for any kind of repair or remediation.
CAO, did you want to comment? Add to that?
No, Preston's bang on. Have we turned our mind to mitigation along Bay Street? No.
So if I could just add to that, my father tells me that we all need to go to Holland because they know how to keep water out, and we need to learn how to do that here. So anyway, I don't know, do we want to throw some money in the budget for that?
Pre-designed.
There we go.
Triton has a windmill.
Okay, so I see a bunch of hands. Start with Councilor Tadman, and then over to Councilor Riley.
Well, I think everybody witnessed what was going on on the Bay Street, right from where Louis Cripps has his building right up to the other end. Well, you could go all the way up to, as far as you could go up to, we call it Sammy Wilson's cottages, where you had to pump out there. But what concerns me is, we put a lot of money into making that a new road, and it's eroding on this side. So I think we've got to do something, because we're going to lose the road eventually. And if it's going to be higher this year than last year, and in '17, it could very easily, you know, deteriorate so bad that we'll have to reconstruct it again.
Councilor Riley?
Thank you. Just on the thought that the mayor had a few minutes ago, would it be wise for this council to dust off the waterfront master plan? I know there was kind of Taj Mahal ideas in there for some folks, but there were also some good ideas in there, and you're right, as far as a break wall and some mitigation along the water. So would that be something that, at some point, I know we did talk about reviewing, I think that was in our strategic plan, to review all of the master plans that we have sitting on the shelf, that maybe at some point this year, we do pull that one out, dust it off, and have a look, and it probably needs tweaking, that's for sure. We're not going to do everything that's in there. That's a very grand plan, but I think there are some options there and some food for thought into how to maybe fix some of our issues.
Yeah. I see CAO Castleman making notes. I don't know if we need to budget anything now, but is that something we can maybe dust off and pull out and talk about at a future council meeting? Is that, everyone okay with that? I think it's too premature to try to budget anything, we don't know where we're at, but I think we have to look at it. Exactly.
However, if we just talked about $300,000 plus that the CAO was just talking about for some kind of design work, and regardless of whether we get that this year, that little pot of money will be there, if we can come up with some kind of an idea, or at least a place to start.
Yep. Councilor Tadman?
Two things, am I allowed two?
Two, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any candies? You can have three. Sorry.
I got gum.
No.
No, not the same. Whenever we talk about this, I think we need to pull out of the surveys and what we own down there, all the way along there, because, you know, I don't think, well, I know the residents think they own, but they don't. They all have, you just have to look at their tax bills to know that they have view, but they don't have waterfront property. And this is going to open a big can of worms because they use it like it's their own. But at some point, we have to say, this is everybody's property. And up at the other end especially, there's cottages that are sitting on municipal land. And I think we have to be aware of the fact that some of them, some of them up at the very far end are ready to tumble down. What are we going to do about that? Are we just going to let somebody else come in and do whatever with it? And I know the family that owns it now, they're hardly ever there, but they keep renting these places out, and people keep coming back. But it was really bad, and it cost the taxpayers a lot of money to pump out there last year. That pump ran for weeks. And that was just to keep that property so that it didn't go under, and the homes there or the cottages there to go under. Yeah, as far as you can go up there. Yeah, and I know there's surveys, I don't know where we keep that kind of stuff, but when they did the waterfront to begin with, and we saw what we owned all along there.
I'm just, for a little levity here, I'm just curious to see whether you're establishing my game plan for the next three years here.
You betcha. We'll keep you busy. Are you done, Mayor?
No, because I have something totally different, if I'm allowed.
Should we wrap up this conversation? Are we good with this conversation at this point?
Yeah, wrap that up.
Councilor Anderson, and then Councilor LeBlanc.
Perhaps an idea comes from last year where the mayor wanted to have a reserve set aside for whatever, I can't remember exactly what it was, but some money set aside for future, for future. But if we, I'm in favor of doing that type of thing when you have a project going over to what Councilor LeBlanc's talking about, that you actually have something that you're planning for, and that reserve is going towards that, not just going into a reserve that we have some money for the next year if we need it, or we, but we actually are putting it towards a project, and whether it's a waterfront project, or whether it's a new rec stand or whatever. But I think maybe it's time we should be doing that too. And so I'm sort of going back to what you were looking for last year.
Roads.
You recall.
Councilor LeBlanc?
And I'm surprised you haven't said anything yet.
Thank you, Councilor. Deputy Mayor, to the CAO, the financial officer. Last year, this council, as a group, we put $320,000 into designing somewhere around that number. This year, and we're, that went into reserve because a lot of the work wasn't done, and you're using that money dish from last year's budget, reserve for this year. We haven't allotted anything for designing for the next future years. And I'll go back to the mayor's comment that he was excellent done a couple of weeks ago, where he said that we've got to stop thinking what the counties do, we've got to start thinking what is the best thing for the citizens of Brighton. And this is the time to do it. We may have a bigger flood, we may have to go into that, we may have to design, but we've got to have a strategic plan. The mayor asked you, which is another question for you, if you were going to give us the same thing as the surface roads for paved roads in town, a seven-year plan. I saw a three-year plan with the CAO, and it'd be nice to have a seven-year plan, so when the citizens ask us, we could give them what the paved roads are, not just the surface road. I know it's not written in stone, but it's good. But last year, we put the $320,000 for pre-design. We haven't put anything in it for this year.
Lynda, go ahead.
Yes, we carried over $328,000. Preston has just explained that he has some engineering awards for three years' worth of roadwork, four years' worth of roadwork, several projects. So we're planning ahead for all of those projects. In addition, there's another $200,000 in this budget just for engineering that we haven't talked about yet, on, you know, we haven't earmarked that for any specific project planning. So we have put money in this year's budget for that.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so we've talked about something for the waterfront, we've talked about pre-engineering. Councilor Tadman, you had something else you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, it's like a broken record, that we've got to start looking after our buildings, and this one's a mess. And I know we're doing some, but how much are we doing? And let's at least get what's unsafe. Like, I won't come up those back steps now, because I'd be afraid of falling. That railing shakes, and it doesn't reflect on us well, when I see the mess with the bricks coming off and all the rest of it. And I know that you talked about hiring someone that's going to do a lot of maintenance too, as part of the job. I definitely think that could be a full-time job for the next 10 years, by the looks of things around here. We're not showing who we are very well, when, sure, we've got a new library, but the rest of the place is crumbling. I mean, this, well, never mind, you know what it looks like. So are we, how far are we going to go with the outside? And you did say you're doing part of the outside work on the brick?
I think CAO wants to respond to you.
I'm going to jump in here, and Councilor Tadman, you're bang on. Corporate image should be important to all of us around. And have we done a good job with respect to corporate image and the maintenance and upkeep of our municipal facilities? The quick answer is no. Am I proud of what I see each and every day? No. So do we have a game plan with respect to getting it better? Yes, we do. So we're doing a couple of things in our strap plan. We've indicated that we want to do facility maintenance, or facility, we want to develop a facility game plan. So we want to assess all of our facilities, identify all the strengths and weaknesses of each, and then prioritize the projects accordingly. Step number one, that's in the game plan for this year. Got $100,000 or so allocated for that. So we're ready to go once the budget is approved. So in the next few months, we'll know where the problems are, and then we'll be able to tackle them on a priority basis. Secondly, we chatted last week with respect to the organizational review that we completed back in August. And at that time, we identified bringing on a full-time staff member to deal with facilities. We've got a lot of buildings that we have to take care of each and every year. We're not doing a very good job about it, so we need to allocate a staff member to tackle it on a full-time basis, develop the long-term game plans, look at accessibility, look at roofs that are leaking. This roof down in Public Works, I'm walking into buildings and you can't use the building or the offices because the water's and you can't use the building or the offices, because the water's leaking through the roof, and I'm saying, what are we doing? So we've got a game plan on how to go forward positively. We are where we are, so let's make it better at the end of the day.
Follow-up? Yes?
Yes, and I know that the first thing you look at is health and safety. That has to be number one priority. And leaking roofs can be very dangerous, too. But for accessibility, we have to get on that. You know, it's not long before we're going to be in trouble if we don't look after the accessible part of this.
Okay. After all of that, I think we're at about 3.5 blended, and so 5.5 municipal? That's my guess.
Yeah, we haven't really moved.
No.
We went up about 0.03%. A few things that we didn't discuss this evening, but that are coming out of your meeting on Thursday. So we need to add recruiter fees to the budget. That's 40,000. So following a discussion with the CAO, we're recommending that we take that...we eliminate the administration reserve, so we use the 34,006 dollars that are in there, and then an additional 5,994 out of the general reserve. That's your 40,000. The other item that the CAO has recommended that we tackle is the compensation review. And so we're recommending that that just come out of the general reserve. So there's no impact to the taxpayer for those, but the reserves are being reduced by 50,000.
Okay.
If council wishes to discuss the engineering budget, where there may be room to move on that, I would recommend that we not move more than 50,000 down, because we'll be at risk of reducing our capital budget at that point.
Okay. So our municipal levy is at what right now, then, Linda? Five point...we just moved a few?
5.49.
5.49. And our blended is at?
3.48.
So whether or not we want to talk about changing engineering or not, it really depends on whether we are satisfied with that increase at this point, or whether we want to look at other things. It'd be good just to hear from everyone. Go ahead, Counsel LeBlanc.
Taking money from the administration. I'm not in favor of that. I was not in favor of it the last time. And if we're going to hire a recruiter, we should basically add it to the budget, or find it somewhere else, and to get the recruiter that you want.
I don't think we're taking any money from administration. It's a...
It's a reserve. It's there for a reason for...
Yep. What was the reason for the reserve? Money that we didn't use?
That reserve's been there a long time. I have no history on it at all.
So there's no purpose for it? It's just money that wasn't used at one point and put into reserve? This is a perfect way to use it, in my opinion?
Go ahead. If I may, Deputy Mayor, one of the goals that we have at the moment is to bring a report back to council when we do the year-end reserve report, and recommend that we eliminate some of these reserves. We have quite a few that we have no history on, and it may be the opportunity this year to just, you know, eliminate them and move some money around.
Yep. That makes sense. Counselor Rowley, I saw your hand up.
Yep, thank you. When I look at our estimated activity for reserves, that'd be page seven in the second draft. I guess my concern is that we are taking out almost half of what we've put in, what's there. So I don't know what effect that has. I mean, if we started at the end of 2019 with 3.8 million, and we take out 1.7, 1.75 almost, that's a significant amount to take out that we have to, at some point, I would imagine, kind of bank up again. I don't know how we do that. I know some of it is because there are projects from last year that we put money in and that we're cleaning out, but it looks like a lot of money.
But at the end of the year, we end up putting money back into those reserves. Some of it is an ongoing thing, is it not? I mean, no, we don't want to deplete them too low.
We really don't want to deplete our reserves, because we're borrowing against them, and that's important. This year, you're tackling a very large wastewater project, and you can probably note that a lot of the money coming out of the reserves are for that project. And there were some substantial dollars that were, you know, transferred at year-end for certain projects, and we've brought them forward. A lot of gas tax money being used for Telephone Road, which is paving that road, so that might be another discussion council may wish to have.
Telephone, yeah.
Because that is about a million dollars coming out of your gas tax, that you won't have for future projects. So that might be some of the discussion you may want to have. But 40,000 coming out of reserves for a recruiter, it seems like a really good use of reserve money at this point, facing, you know, the situation that we're in, and trying to stop some of the bleeding that we have in the planning department.
Yep, to get it done. Yes, can we talk Telephone Road? Telephone Road, what is the amount? Do you have it there? And that's a road that's primarily used by?
I would argue primarily used by waste management vehicles contracted through the county, yes, which are, by the way, municipal vehicles, so we couldn't shut that road off to them, I'm told. It would be no different than trying to shut it off to a...close it off to a fire truck or a snowplow. Now, we could encourage the operators to use the county roads. My preference would be simply get the county to take that road from us.
Is that an option? Anyone have a comment on that?
My understanding is that county staff and local staff are going to be having a conversation around the roads, the greater roads and transportation network strategy. I doubt that that will happen before we can establish our budget. But at this stage, I'm just not in favor of bringing that road up to an asphalt standard for the purpose of somebody else's trucks. It's a rural road. If it degrades because of the use it's getting now and continues to get, I guess we have to look at that. But that's a lot of money. A million dollars is a lot of money for a road that we should be spending, what, about 300 grand on, at the end of the day?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The reason Telephone Road came to our attention is the condition and the amount of liability Brighton assumes for the condition of that road. We have some very bad sections that are rough, they're distorted. We have edge breakup that's severe for the bulk of the length. We have constant washouts on the hill over on the McDonald's end of that road. So given the traffic that's on that road, and the condition of it is kind of why it came to light as being one of our dire needs, to protect the liability. Because if we have a lawsuit, it's against Brighton, not the county. So upgrading that road protects us from future liability. And it currently is an asphalt road. I believe it's only a single lift, so the design and the estimate we've come up with is a double lift, which is designed to support the heavy truck traffic that it receives, which it probably should have been built to that standard, whenever it was reconstructed 15 or so years ago.
Counsel Anderson?
Aren't we allowed, as a municipality, to put a load limit on certain roads? Like no trucks?
Yes, we are. And my understanding is that you can restrict truck traffic, because the dump trucks are not essential service. Our snowplows are, the ambulance, the fire trucks, those are all core essential services that affect the human health. So...
Nothing garbage collection trucks would be considered essential services.
And then we have the conversation with the county. Put the restriction on, and then we have the conversation. They want to use the road, fix it.
However, if we restrict them from using that road, they're going to beat up another road. We're going to be...
The only next access is to go down to 26, which is their road.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
So let them use their road.
Let them run their own road.
I've always been saying, use your own darn roads for this purpose.
I think we take the action that we can take, and then we have the conversation. We give them some warning. I exstate that that road's going to switch to load restrictions. Your fire trucks can use it, your police can use it, everybody can use it. Trucks and transit, you know, things like that, no. And then we make sure our enforcement's there.
Okay, so this is a budget conversation. So the first conversation is whether or not we're going to fix it. And then the other, I guess, one is if we're going to fix it, do we want to put a restriction on it so that we're not fixing it again in a few years? Right? Is that kind of what we're talking about? Yeah. So we'd like to hear kind of everyone's comments on that, whether we're going to still fix it, and whether or not we're for putting some restrictions on it. Counselor Tadman, your hand is up.
Has the county been approached? And you've talked to them about...yeah, and you've talked to them. Then I say hold back on Telephone Road even...but I agree with you. If they've already been told that they, you know, they're ruining that road, and really there isn't how many houses are on that, other than...I'm trying to think. How many? And those 10 people would have been fine if it hadn't been torn up by the big trucks.
Yep.
And they've already been asked, then, to use their own road?
No, they've been asked to cost share in the replacement of the road.
Which they said no?
They did.
Okay.
And have they been asked to use County Road 26?
We have not gone down that road. No pun intended.
Can we give them, before we...well, I think hold out on Telephone Road, but to protect ourselves from any lawsuits, that we need to do something immediately. And if it means that, you know, we can gently, you know...I usually bring candy, so that you all like me, so we could give them a bit of candy and say, this is the way it is, and we're not going to take responsibility for what you're doing to our roads. So either use your own road, or we're putting up restrictions.
Yeah, I'd be okay with fixing the road, but then putting up a restriction. To what standard do we fix it? Yeah.
Do we just single lift, or do we do the... Spend a million bucks is my question.
Yeah.
We could do the surface treating option, but it will not take the truck traffic. It probably wouldn't last two years, and it'll be blown right apart. Perhaps our best option at this point is to seek maybe legal advice to see, to make sure we can dictate what traffic we want to see on that road, and then enforcement would have to follow.
At the end of the day, this is gas tax money, so we're not affecting the tax rate one way or the other.
That's correct.
But what we don't...right, what we don't want to do is pass a budget with a million dollars for Telephone Road in it, and then hear, you know, six months later, well, we just did it anyway. And I know we wouldn't from this group, but, you know, we've been down different paths before, where we passed budgets, and we go, well, we did it anyway, even though you were still talking about it. And we certainly don't want that to happen with this million dollars. So if there are other solutions, I think what you're hearing from council is let's find those other solutions. Certainly, let's find out legally what we're permitted to do or not do with that road in terms of closing it to truck traffic that belongs to another municipality, municipality's contractor, of which we are allegedly a partner.
So we leave it in the budget, then, because it is gas tax money. If we don't end up using it, then it's just less gas tax money that we use, correct?
Right.
And we find out what our options are as far as limiting the traffic. Is that kind of the wish? Is everyone kind of in agreement? Does that what we want to do?
And therefore, what are our options with reconstruction, right?
Yes, exactly. We can make those decisions later. It's gas tax money, it's not going to affect the tax base, and we can choose to spend less of that gas tax money if we're able to. Does that make sense to everyone? Yeah? Yeah? Counsel Anderson?
Just as long as there's a bit of a plan somewhere that we're using, we're doing this, but we're going with that plan to send the message to the county that...
That's what I just said.
Is that what you said?
I believe so. I think everyone else, I think we all understand that.
No, no.
We want a plan. We're not going to do anything. We're keeping it in the budget. We're not going to do anything until we investigate.
All right.
Right? Makes sense? Okay, so we're good with that. Are we okay with a 5.49 municipal increase and a 3.48 blended? And if not, what are we going to change? Perhaps the CAO may have some options if we're not. But let's go...okay, let's go. Would you like to start?
Sure. So I was going to say something about a wish list of mine, which is a 1% infrastructure levy. However, I also note that we have increased our capital spending, our infrastructure spending, by about 1.2%. So that really covers off my want...because an infrastructure levy really is just to make sure we're spending money on critical infrastructure and filling that infrastructure deficit gap in. So by increasing our capital expenditure by 1.2%, I'm more satisfied than perhaps I would have been last year at this time. So thank you to staff for that. I'm going to back away from my 1% for this year. And with that, say, although I would have liked to have seen us around the 5% level, had we gotten to the 5% level, I probably would have been here arguing for another percent. So I think I can live with 5 and 1/2-ish on the municipal levy, I think.
Okay. Doug, do you want to go next?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to see it higher for pre-designing and doing something. I'd like to have it 6.5, 6.4. I know some people would like that, but it gives us a bit more legal for designing and getting some projects done. If we're going to purchase property, I'd like to put an extra 1% or 1.2% in.
Okay. Let's keep going around.
I should say, the long and short of it is, I'm pleased with where we are as well. I am also pleased with staff that we are finally driving towards the future. Not in big, grand steps, but we are looking more forward than we are trying to react to situations that we've had to deal with. So my compliments to staff for, in slow, small, positive steps, moving this municipality forward.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I can't take offense to sitting here for eight years and thinking nothing was done, and there was lots done, and I'll leave it at that. But I believe that I represent all of the taxpayers, and I know that a lot of people are struggling. And I can't remember what the tax increase was last year.
We were a little higher last year, and the county was a little lower.
I do not believe that people that are struggling can sustain this kind of tax increase. And so there's other ways of bringing this down, in lots of ways. And I've always felt that because the interest rate's so low, it's better sometimes to borrow for long term than to put this all in the back so the people of today, because a lot of this stuff is not just for this year, it's for 25 years or whatever. So I know we've got some loans, you know, and we can argue that through, but what is the interest rate now that we'd be paying?
It depends on how many years...
I know.
You're stretching it out. Anywhere from probably 2.6 to 3.3, I would think.
That's cheap for borrowing on something that's hopefully going to last a long time. So is there something...the fire truck, I can't remember how we were funding that now. I can't remember all of the funding. I'd have to go back and look at it. Is there some way...and I'm certainly in favor of getting the fire truck. It's just how do we fund something like that? And how much were we paying actually of that amount?
So with the vehicles, like in other years, we're going to borrow internally and then we're going to pay the interest annually based on what we would receive at the bank. And then we try to stretch those payments out over the life of the vehicle. The same goes for the rubber tire excavator that was introduced in this budget draft. And we've stretched that out over 10 years. So as you're using it up, you're paying for it for the future. Like you're not paying for it today.
So I think what Councilor Tadman is looking for, are there other areas where we can be doing more long-term borrowing rather than paying in a shorter term? Is that kind of what you... So I guess that's the question. So do you, I don't know if you know off the top of your head if there's any areas that we can look at.
There are, but it actually would work against you increasing capital because you're going to have that impact over a longer period of time rather than having that impact this year. That's the first thing. I think this budget, as it has in the past few years, has built in a lot of tools. So you're using some reserves, you're borrowing from reserves, you're borrowing from long-term, like from a bank or Infrastructure Ontario. So you're using all of the tools that you have at your disposal to fund a lot of projects. If you look at this budget, you'll see the bottom line is you're spending between $26 and $30 million on projects this year and on funding the services you're providing to the municipality. That's a lot of money. So you're asking taxpayers to pay $9.4 million of that. So that's a substantial amount of your budget that isn't coming from the taxpayers.
Okay, so Councilor Tadman, do you have an amount or a percentage that you're thinking? I'm just curious.
Well, I just think of my own taxes now. And I know I have waterfront, so, you know, I inherited it or I wouldn't have had it. But last year they went up about $300. And now I'm paying $5,500 taxes. And I do not have the money in what I receive at the end of the year to keep up that kind of taxes. So I'm going to be forced to sell. But what about all these other people? You know, we can't just think about the people that have moved in and they're demanding all the wonderful things. But those are the first people that tell you, don't raise my taxes. So I would, the highest I would go is at 2.5. And I can't justify in two years, 7% increase. I cannot go to the people that are struggling now and say, sorry, you know, you're going to pay more taxes and you're going to lose your house. But, yeah, tough.
I just, I was reading, I think it's Queenie West that offers a tax rebate for seniors and low-income families. Is that ever something that we've talked about here? It's just like a certain sum that they get reduced. And I imagine they would probably have to apply for it and show their income. But is that something we've ever talked about here?
There is a bylaw. It's a Northumberland County bylaw. That is an upper tier. The lower tier doesn't have that authority. It's an upper-tier authority. And so we follow their bylaw. As far as I know, no resident has ever received that. And it's not a subsidy in Northumberland County. It's actually a tax deferral. And so if a taxpayer met all the criteria within that bylaw, then they could apply for and receive a tax deferral. And, you know, when the house is sold, then all those taxes would be paid back.
Okay, Councilor Anderson?
Shall we be looking at a couple of items that can reduce this budget? I can suggest $50,000.
Where?
At the end of Ontario Street, at the docks there, that parking lot. I didn't agree to that. That's 50, wasn't it 50? Is that coming out of...
I believe it's coming out of reserves. So if we're going to make suggestions, it has to be tax-funded amounts.
All right, that's reserves?
I think we've budgeted for that already. Is that, and it's been...
It's passed.
Actually, I think about half is, that sounds right, 25 and 25.
So there's nowhere to go then. So what are we...
Trying to find it. Go ahead, Councilor Tadman, and then back to Councilor Riley.
I have, Councilor Bateman's not here, so I don't know what his opinion is. But it seems the general consensus around the table. I haven't heard from Councilor Anderson what he feels, but maybe you should get the consensus around the table because we're wasting our time if I'm the only one that says 2.5. And I will not be supporting this. So you know where I'm sitting and everybody else has to make a decision.
Sure. Yep, consensus as far as are you satisfied with where we're at right now? Or do you want to cut?
Is there anywhere where you can cut?
Well, there's lots of things we can cut, but then things don't get done. That's right. So at this point, are you satisfied with 3.? Let's just get a consensus from everyone. Individual consensus.
Well, it would be nice that if it didn't have to go, you know, I think everything we've talked about is, we've talked it out well. And we've got good explanations of why we should be doing what we're doing. And I think we're all on the same page as far, even you, Mary. I think you agree with what we're doing, not necessarily the end result. I think that's where you're standing. I think you agree with, what we have to do is we're getting things done. And last year, we did a good job that way. And the staff's doing an excellent job trying to maintain what our goals are as well. But to keep passing on increases to the public can be a burden on some people. I agree. But we need, we're looking at the full community. So if there was a place that we could bring it down a little bit, fine, I would. But if not, I would accept it the way it is.
You've got the consensus except for if everybody else, there's no point in talking anymore.
Councilor Riley, thank you. One thing to note is we know that the county has not yet passed their budget. Can we guess that it will not be over the 3% and that it will come down? And depending on if, say if it came down a half a percent, how much, how would that affect our bottom line?
I can speak to part one of the question.
Certainly.
3% is the upset limit. So 3% is what staff have recommended to County Council. County Council hasn't gone in and, I know that this County Council won't add anything to the budget. So it's a matter of whether or not council will approve it as is or ask staff to bring it back a bit, which we did last year.
Right, so 3% is the max.
I think so.
And I know you have deliberations this week.
Tomorrow and Thursday.
Right. So for the, just for the sake of saying that the county gets generous and knocks it down a half a percent, what will that do to our blended rate then? Please, Linda?
So if the county was reduced down to 2.4%, let's say, it would still be 3.26% blended. So we're almost half. To speak to Councilor Tadman's point, to reduce it by a percent, the blended rate by a percent, you would have to remove 2% from your municipal budget, which would be like $160,000, $170,000.
Okay, so I think we've kind of gone around. We have a general consensus. I see us doing a lot of good things, making a lot of good progress. And I think it would be really difficult to cut it down, that 2%. I'm satisfied with where we're at. Are we ready to... Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
Sorry Deputy Mayor, I'm talking of today. What it is, is that one thing that Preston brought up, I think was the last one today, that really touched my heart, was when he said that it would take three years to bring our sidewalks up to the minimal, minimal accessibility standard. And that touched me a lot. So and I feel for the citizens that don't and I didn't know that you could get taxed back. So this is why I would support keeping it as is because we've got to start doing stuff. We can't let our infrastructure keep falling down, our buildings, everything else, so.
Okay. So I think that's a consensus, that we're not going to continue to deliberate to try to reduce anything. Is everyone satisfied with that? Everyone agreement in that at this point? Okay. I think at this point, we do need a few motions in order to get some RFPs out. Councilor Riley?
So don't need it.
There you go. Keep sort of...
Bob took it.
Anyway, I know we're going to, yes, recommend or move motions to have some RFPs. I would also like to see us move a staffing position forward. The person who will kind of work downstairs in the clerk's office along with our economic development officer.
The administrative assistant, is it?
I'm not sure what the...
Yeah, records management admin assistant. And I believe we've budgeted for the full 12 months. So that sounds like a good idea.
Right, so I would, if someone would second that, I would move that we also add that to the pile of things to start on shortly.
Candace, are you okay with it that way? Does that work? Okay. Just a second. Candace, a list is good? Okay, so just as long as we know that. Sorry, Councilor LeBlanc, what was your question?
We discussed about, some of the committees don't have a staff member with them, like accessibility, archives and stuff. So it makes it very hard. Is that part of this budget too that we're voting on?
Well, overall, I think that's a staffing thing, right? That our request is there. But this is for that admin person here that we're talking about, getting that one hired. Okay, but the list of other projects, I guess, is what we need at this point. Do we want to get that? Yeah. Preston, what are the ones that you need?
The only two pressing issues would be the electric SUV and the rubber tire excavator. Everything else is going to take time to get posted anyway. So there's no need to do any pre-approval, if you will.
Okay. Linda, are you aware of any others that... Yeah. Yeah, parks and rec maybe, or just so we get it done.
I'm not sure about Jim Miller's budget. I know that, are there any water projects that you want to move forward with tenders right now? I know that for sure, the fire truck is important because it takes a long time to build something like that. Would you agree, Chief?
Thank you through you Deputy Mayor. Yes, Linda, that would, the fire truck, you're looking at probably over a year to get that from start to finish. So that and the air compressor, as ours has been out of service now for about three months. So I'd like to get that underway as quick as possible.
If we could, those new items that we just added tonight.
Yes.
So both the recruitment.
Yep, the recruitment.
And the compensation review.
The recruiter.
Would you like...
Yes.
Yeah, so the reality is, sorry. What I'd like to get pre-approval for, and I'm ready to roll, is all the initiatives I chatted with you about last Thursday. I got consensus from the gang, from council. And so I'm ready to go. So we need to fill those gaps and let's fill them as quickly as we can.
So we need words for a motion.
Yep. Because the budget isn't passed yet, we need...
So we're providing pre-approval.
Okay.
That was funny. It popped up and I thought this was ideal. So this is not a meeting, this is an email. You don't have to like me, you just have to put up with me. So if we get this done tonight, we don't need a meeting tomorrow night, right? Okay, so I have a motion, moved by councillor LeBlanc and second by councillor, oh no, moved by councillor Rowley, second by councillor LeBlanc, that the committee of the whole provide budget pre-approval for the following: rubber tire excavator, electric SUV, recruitment of records admin for clerk's department slash economic development, recruiter for director of planning, recruitment for senior planner... Are they the same thing? Okay. Pay equity audit, compensation review, recruitment manager of operations, and recruitment of 1.5 FTE operators. These are all things we've discussed.
Fire truck, maybe?
No. Do we need more than just the fire?
We shall have to budget.
So, we're going to add to that the fire truck and the new air compressor system. Any questions? Go ahead.
I don't need to know right now, but I would like to know how much that totals. I'm curious what our pre-approval will total. I'm in favor of this, I don't need to know right now. An email will do. Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead councillor Tadman.
Because I didn't want to go higher than 2.5, I think I just have to vote against all of it, or, because we've, I wasn't able to discuss ways of reducing it, and the rest of the committee of all were satisfied with where we were. So, I guess the best thing for me is to say no, so if you want to have a recorded vote, I don't care, I'm not calling one, but I will not, and there's most things in there I agree with, but not all of them.
So you do not, you're not calling a recorded vote?
Um, sure.
You are. It's all written. No.
Deputy Mayor Laura Bink.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Ostrander.
Yes.
Councillor Ron Anderson.
Yes.
Councillor, Mark Bateman is absent. Councillor Doug LeBlanc.
Yes.
Councillor Emily Rowley.
Yes.
It's carried.
I have a motion here, actually, we probably should have done this before all that, but it's a motion moved by councillor Anderson and second by councillor LeBlanc, that the committee receive the 2020 budget second draft. All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. Next, we move into question period. We got a two thumbs up. That's unusual. No in-camera session, and so I have a motion to adjourn, moved by councillor Anderson and second by councillor LeBlanc, that the February 11, 2020 committee of the whole budget meeting adjourn at 7:57 PM. All those in favor?